All of you in order? Uh, this really could be the role call, please.
Councilmember Shanta.
Here.
Councilmember Keisler.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember George.
Here.
And hopefully Mr. Stoll will be here as well.
Expect him in a few minutes. Okay, um, flag salute.
My flag tradition is to flag the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before sitting down, if you'd all still stand, uh, we lost a valued member of our community, Carl Alco, and, um, I'd like to have a few moments, a moment of silence here in his memory.
Memory of Carl Alco.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, approve the agenda.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 21st meeting, 2017.
A second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Presentations none. Committee reports economic development. Mark, do you have anything you'd like to report on that? About, uh, the business with the water facility, or is that not?
No, that's, that's still in the process.
I'd say the big thing we're looking at right now is we're waiting to receive the topographical map from, uh, the company that's doing our airport layout plan, and the topographical map is something that Kaufman Associates did as part of that plan, and we're planning on using that to, uh, look into taking the next step to turn that property to the east of the airport. So, once we get that, um, Richard Dindus has some investors of these that are interested. They'll take a look at the topographical map and figure out what, where we can do various things up there, so that's what we're looking for in that. Um, that's all we have on that. Finance?
Finance, Matt, how long ago?
Just before the holidays.
Before, but it was before Christmas. But we haven't had a council meeting since then, right?
No.
Okay. Um, frankly, it's been so long that I, I don't have the details of the meeting at the top of my head. Um, the only real thing that I can remember, we, I think we did like a budget, a quarterly review roughly of, um, of the general fund. The overall, you know, finances continue to be extremely tight. We sort of were looking at, in that type of review, being halfway through the fiscal year, if the funds are halfway through either revenues or expenses, and, um, taking into consideration which funds fluctuate a lot, you know, sometimes payments don't come in, so you're not, you know, only 20% of the revenue's in, but we're 50% of it through the year, but, um, we didn't have Pam with us at the, at the meeting, but, um, City Manager did a really good job of helping us understand sort of the realities of those, when the payments come in, expenses go out, things like that. So, generally, everything's okay. Um, Mark did, I don't know if you have any of these on the top of your head, but did mention that there would be some budget amendments coming for the council soon. Um, I know of some specific departmental requests, um, and today's one of them, but there, there's likely to be more, um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at, but, yeah, finances are tight.
Just to say, the budget amendment requests, um, uh, once we get through with the mid-year review from the enterprise funds, uh, if there's any discovery in the need for budget adjustments being made after going through the mid-year review, I'd like to bring them all at one time for council consideration. Uh, I know, uh, I have one from Paul Dolly that has to do with engineering, and there's a couple others, but, uh, until we get through the, the mid-year review, I want to bring them all to the council.
So that'll be at the end of March, maybe in April, or?
Uh, well, I'm hoping next month, Pam was, was away on vacation, she's back now, uh, she's been busy working with our auditor, so once, uh, she'll have some busy work after the auditor leaves, uh, for the first part next week, but then I'm, I'm gonna be, after reviews, uh, of reports for mid-year review and schedule another finance committee. Go with the enterprise.
Shanta, do you have anything? Okay. Uh, public facilities and services, I bet it does not match. And, uh, airport, uh, we're working on right now is, uh, assembling, um, as best we can, a financial picture that we're gonna be proposing to, uh, the FAA to cover our match for the upcoming fiscal year. So, um, each year we get a hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant money, of which about 5.5% we have to cover. Um, what we're looking at is the amount of money that we need for the next step. So, our last, this last year has been spent looking at a pavement management plan and a airport layout plan. Once those are done, the next step is to move into the actual fixing of the things that are discovered. So, the next step is to fix the runways. The runways, um, have to have a design done, and that design is what we'll be looking at in the next fiscal year, and we've identified most of what we can do to offset the matching that we would have to put in to have that design document done by doing in kind, for instance, the pay that goes out to the city manager to manage the budget, things like that. So, our goal is to end up with the next step, um, and then not having any additional costs on it, and at the same time, we're working to find ways to, uh, match the outlays we have to do on a regular basis each year with revenue, and we'll be looking at that as the airport layout plan comes from Kaufman and Associates, and we'll be able to get a better sense and pow-wow together with, uh, everything we learned from the FAA as we submit this next round of documents. So, any questions on that? Okay, uh, emergency plant task force.
Yeah, our thing, uh, we need to cancel, we just left slide, stand sound.
Okay. Veterans Memorial.
We are going to be signature.
Okay.
I've been assured with that.
Thank you.
Uh, reserve to Mark, anything?
Yeah, if you'd like to keep up with it. Uh, the, the Veterans Memorial, um, staff before was looking at trying to get the sidewalk, uh, around the memorial replaced and the tree stump that, uh, that's cut down, that was lifting the sidewalks removed. Uh, we have money in the budget, uh, just under twenty-three thousand dollars for sidewalk work, and that was gonna, that is scheduled to be the first priority in, uh, using that money, uh, but due to some, uh, latest developments with potential revenue, uh, concerns, putting that on hold, plus the weather is another factor, so we're looking at, uh, hopefully in the spring, uh, that being the first, uh, round of sidewalk work that, uh, that they work slow with.
So, to be clear, without getting into any details, we're in a situation right now where we have to be frugal with our budget to see what happens down the line, the situation. With that in mind, the city manager has recommended to be frugal with any outlays that we don't need to do immediately, and, uh, combined with the weather, the ideas that we'll take on sidewalk repairs, and we'll be budgeted for this fiscal year, and do it when the weather is ripe, and at the same time with Vietnam, I'm sorry, the Veterans Memorial will be right up in the first trench of, uh, projects to work on.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mark, I'm just curious, the twenty-three thousand that's in the budget for the sidewalk repairs, is that from the discretionary piece, or is that funds from the, um, local transportation commission project?
No, it, that's a separate project.
Okay.
Uh, we are looking at, uh, using some of those discretionary funds as well for the, uh, LTC, the money that we're looking to get for the sidewalks and most shelters.
Cause that money is not discretionary, right? That's gonna go to the projects that we submitted for?
Yes, that's, yeah, and I've just, I've just worked with their, worked with Pace Civil Engineering on, uh, giving them some direction to start moving forward and getting that project started.
So, there are sidewalk projects that are moving forward, that project specifically, but?
Yeah.
Uh, the additional discretionary funds we're holding off on?
Correct.
Any additions in there? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
No, it's fine, it's all right.
Uh, just curious, if the bottling plant situation does resolve itself, will you then be more, um, feeling more, uh?
Healthy.
More healthy there?
And that's, and things are looking positive. They're running okay there, yes.
The, the sidewalk stuff, you know, is something the council hears about all the time. And so I don't want that to slip off the priority, um, list for us, so as soon as we can get that back on track, that the, to the end of one.
I agree.
Thank you.
Further on the Veterans Memorial, um, I haven't had a chance to sit down with Richard Dindus and check his calendar, but we do wanna have a meeting of the committee, uh, with, of course, Dave is still the, uh, the chair of that, but we're gonna work to come up with a committee, uh, meeting, and we'll be discussing, uh, perhaps a future memorial, larger scale memorial downtown, and also, uh, we're gonna be working to coordinate with the Siskiyou County Veterans Leadership Council to make sure that, uh, when Memorial Day comes around, um, we all are, are in sync with the rest of the county, and hopefully we could, uh, on the southern end of the county, lead off with a parade early on that morning, and the veterans can then move on up the county, but I wanna make sure that this year we're, we're lined up for Memorial Day, so we'll be calling a meeting on that in the near future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, uh, one of our key players, um, Tony Nocchio, we just had some health problems, so he's been unable to fulfill a couple of the things that we had in motion, but, uh, once he's back on track, so will be glad.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, moss spray?
Uh, moss spray effort continues. Uh, did have, um, lengthy conversation with the, the contact, our main contact, Francisco Castillo.
Francisco?
Uh, the other day. There was some, there was a request asking if we submitted our proposal, right, to, to, to him and to the folks in Roseville. So, what I got from Francisco was sort of an update about how that was received, which was very positive. They, uh, at one point were requesting some additional engineering work, basically they wanted to bring the specification of the engineering up to like a 30% level, um, before they passed it on to Omaha, the, the, the real decision makers there. That piece is, is changed now, um, and Francisco, Francisco says, "We're gonna go ahead and brief Omaha on the proposal as it is now, we, we think it's very positive, um, and, and, uh, we don't, they're not gonna require that 30% engineering right now." So, that's good, so the Trailers Association doesn't have to outlay anymore of the, the funds that have been donated right now in that regard. There is a few other updates, um, that I want to brief the council on. Nothing, um, no deal breakers, nothing really that should hinder the project, um, we think, but, um, I don't wanna do that in public session, so we'll either have a closed session or I'll, um, send a memo to the city manager and he can email you, but that'll be.
Wait meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Closed session, that's meeting.
Well, I'll, I'll have a conversation with the city attorney to make sure, whatever I get.
Right, it might, it might be moved by the next meeting, so.
Can I speak tonight, or?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Great, thank you, sir. Broadband?
You know, there's literally no movement on the broadband initiative since the, um, since the CTC report. The, you know, one of the interesting things is, as Mark brought up in our meeting last night, division meeting, um, because of Northland's newer offerings, the, the base level of speed is increasing, um, it's still not a, a level of service that is, you know, really attractive to, um, to businesses, you know, to get them to, to move to the region, we don't think, but I think the effort is gonna continue, specifically, um, our contact at the, um, Economic Development Council, Logan Smith, um, is attending, um, a regional conference, um, specifically around broadband funding in rural communities, so he is hoping to bring back some information to us soon. I would say it's, it's sort of, um, it's not really on the back burner, but the, you know, the sort of pressure cooker of a need for a better service has been relieved a little bit, um, and, and we do have okay service in some areas, not in all areas, we still probably get a, a D or an F in terms of the, the whole county. Um, so I think the effort continues, but it's, it's slow moving, and the next point is to really figure out whether the cities, the three cities involved, really wanna make a, a huge push and do, do something, um, you know, really innovative or, or potentially costly, so. We don't really wanna do that right now if we, if we get away.
Yeah. Mr. Craig and I have been working this together over the last year or so, and to my standpoint, I totally agree with everything that he has said, I would add some other perspectives on it from my viewpoint. Uh, basically what we found out, the three cities got together and pooled money and hired a consulting firm to give us all the data we needed to be able to make a decision as to what, whether we wanted to or could move forward and what path to take. Um, we've got that information, and, and the quick and easy dirty is it would take a large bottom from each of the cities to make the investment to make it happen. Um, so the parameters that we're looking at right now are, uh, trying to find a way around that and to see how the landscape may change in the near future. The reason it's on the back burner, as Mr. Craig mentioned, is because, uh, we haven't found a way around that, and at the time, uh, for most people, they're within a range of 24 megabits per second up to around 100, now, of course, that isn't always the speed that you get, but it's, it's a fairly decent broadband compared to a lot of other places. Uh, at the same time, um, they're looking at increasing that, and they do offer fiber to businesses, although, as you well know, sir, that is a complicated, customized process at the moment that costs a lot of money, right?
Yeah, not so complicated, just very costly.
Costly, right. So, uh, that's kind of where we are right now, so until we hear something else or, or find some other maneuver we can make to move this forward, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now.
I'll just add one tiny thing, which is that, um, it, it's good that we've done this preliminary work and sort of understand the, the landscape better than we ever did before. The bottom line is, it's a sort of a chicken and egg thing. Uh, we could make this, you know, big capital outlay and do, do some sort of big initiative through bonds and things like that, but, in, you know, I, I wouldn't suggest doing something like that until the city's finances are more stable, until the other city's finances are more stable. You wanna do something big like that with a really solid foundation, um, and until we get there, I don't see us recommending any, anything quite like what we've talked about in the past. So, I hope that we are on a more stable footing very soon, but, um, it's, it's difficult to make big plans when, when revenues are so, um, uncertain.
Yes, sir, I agree. Um, beautification is not meeting.
There is no beautification.
I guess, is not meeting. And, uh, so we now have, there's a mistake here somewhere in the agenda, it should be the candidate's task force, the root of the task force. Who wants to report on that?
The time we were here to quit, we'd be starting to call it a candidate's.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we met, um, before the end of the year, I think we meet again next week?
Next week, Tuesday.
Next Tuesday evening? Um, the work, the work continues?
I need to get that posted.
It was posted, it never was posted.
Yeah. You need to get that posted.
Yeah, you need to get it posted, yeah, tomorrow.
All right, so, um, it'll be 5:30, I believe? We moved it to 5:30?
How was five?
We moved it to 5:30. Somewhat, at the last minute. Um, I don't recall now, it's been so many weeks, I think we just said we're gonna put a bunch of topics on the agenda and work through them.
We're still moving forward.
Yeah.
And, as I've said before, and I'll say again, I think everyone in this city should respect and appreciate the work that not only the two members of our city council, Mr. Craig and Mishanta did, uh, Mark Brannigan, our city manager, Sheriff Mero, uh, over there also. I think that, uh, it was a, a nice thing to see people coming together from different sides and being able to come out the other end feeling pretty good. Consensus is, is never meant to make everyone happy, but when you can find a spot where most people feel pretty good, I think you can celebrate it, and so I wanna commend you all and thank you for continuing on your job on that.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements and public comments. Um, I'll open the podium for public comment, uh, please limit your time to three minutes, and as always, we can't reply during the comments, we can reply only after it's instead of done, so podium is not open.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, my name is Peter Artz, 58, 59, Sacramento, I have a view, and of course, the owner of Long Zouay LLC has invested heavily in the future of Dubsir and its downtown district. I asked as nicely as I could of the mayor to place on this agenda or an agenda of the near future, a commitment the city made in 2014 when Dave Keisler was mayor of the city of Dubsir. He agreed with me to hold joint session of the city council and the planning commission on the way on the future of the historic district, the enforcement of the codes that protect the historic district. The star witness was Ron McLeod, who said the historic district has suffered under previous city negligence in enforcing the codes of any sort of vision for the historic district. And I have a newspaper article where the council unanimously, by a vote of five to nothing, agreed and put Ron McLeod to reinstate the historic district oversight committee, a five-member committee, as of 2014. And here we are in 2018, and as far as I know, there's no five-member committee. The beautification committee has nothing to do with the preservation of the historic district. The planning commission and its two delegates have really no helpful effort toward preserving the historic district. As far as I know, the five of you, the city manager, Josh being absent, really don't care about the historic district. In 2013, there was a big article in the Reddick News about the renaissance in downtown of Dubsir, and then Mayor Keisler said, "Well, Peter Artz, he's kinda doing it on his own." And here we are in 2018, and I still feel like I'm doing it on myself. I filed a formal complaint in the city against the building in the historic district that is obviously not compliant with our codes. Your code enforcement officer agrees with me. Is anything fixed in 60 days according to the law, your support for support? No. How long will it take? If you don't wanna support the historic district, reverse the action to Mayor Keisler to, where he led the council, and say, "We're not gonna do that, I'm not gonna, we don't care about the historic district." Or, do what the city's committed to do four years ago and appoint the committee. I don't get it. That's issue one. Issue two is you all have your crystal geyser bottles in front of you, I'm writing down cryptic comments about our bottling plant. When Mario Ravino and I and the city manager, Alan Harvey, got the bottling plant from Coca-Cola, got the water rights back from Coca-Cola, the expectation was 30 to 60 to 90 jobs in Dubsir. The expectation was for hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenues to offset the water and sewer rates. Need to be frugal, potential concerns, latest developments, things are looking positive for the citizens and the business community, we have no idea what you're talking about. All we know is the policies that were made to the city by the holder of that franchise have not come to pass. It's very obvious to me, until that turns into the productive facility we had dreamed and planned on, your budget is gonna be chaotic. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yeah, close the podium, public comments. Let's, uh, Mark, with you? Only you?
No, I would like to make a comment.
Oh, well, yeah, I'll get it to you, yeah. Mark, we'll start with you, though.
As far as responding, or?
No, 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 as far as your report.
Okay.
And then I'll get to Mishanta, then we'll work our way around, and everyone can respond as they wish. So, report from you, sir.
It'll be under announcements and reports, or?
Yes, we're, public comment is closed, so now we're in office reports and council staff.
Okay, um, I would like, uh, to just make note that our auditor is, is here, Lieutenant Charles, uh, he's been working hard, uh, at City Hall for the past week, and himself has been working from afar and been here in the past as well, um, and, uh, been keeping Pam busy and so, uh, and I asked him to come tonight just to introduce himself so that you get, you get to put the face to the name, and also, we do have a, a topic on the agenda today that, uh, has to do with, uh, our contract with, with our there as well. Um, also, I had a meeting with Pace Civil Engineering yesterday, uh, in regards to the Pioneering Grant that we see, a half hundred dollars for the water improvements, and we talked about both, also about sewer, Pioneering stuff that's been done, and also about rate studies that we're gonna be doing as well. And, um, it was back in the October, um, council meeting, the October 19th council meeting, uh, I had asked the city council to authorize the formation of a citizens committee to take part in working to, uh, address the, uh, solid waste and the sewer enterprises and the rate study that's gonna be going through those, such as 2018, and, um, received authorization from the city council to form that committee, and working with Pace yesterday, uh, we have a date that we're looking in February, I think it's the, February, uh, September, uh, February, I think it's 19th, where we're looking to have a, a committee, uh, report with Pace Civil Engineering, Paul Rutter, and begin the discussion of the rate, uh, rate study. Uh, right now, Pace Civil Engineering has requested, uh, the audit, audited information and budget information which Pam has provided, so they're gonna start going through that, and in the meantime, Julie and I are gonna be working together to, uh, start getting the word out and try to get people to walk here, to be selected and put on this committee.
Well, that'd be something that we'll be talking about later on tonight when we talk about our committee assignments, or?
Yeah, it's not in there, but, uh, it should, so I'd like to, uh, have that added into the committee composition, that has our group's, and, and look for two council representatives.
I know I wanna be on that as well, so whoever else would like to, I'm one of them.
Yeah, ad hoc committee or task force.
Like, well, I'm kind of imagining to do it like we did for the water, I mean, use that as a model.
Yes.
So, it gives, like, citizens and two council members, it gives us a good number to work with, so.
Yeah, and, uh, I will be out of the office tomorrow, I'll be going to the score board meeting, um, and, uh, Dan, our fire chief, is gonna be there for, during the training, during lunch as well. Pam will be here, so if there's anything that comes up, you can reach Pam, I'm, I'm away, so I'll be working, I have my cell phone and my computer as well.
Okay. Mishanta?
Um, first of all, if you'd like to answer something that Mr. Artz said?
Sure, honey. I, we can't hear you, I can't hear you.
Sorry, Peter, yeah, I always forget to, um, to speak into the mic. I'd like to, um, just answer to something that you had a comment on. I wasn't on council at the time, but I do remember that there was a, um, don't know whether I wanna call it a committee, it was formed for the historic district, and I think seven people were nominated for it, and, you know, I remember sitting in the audience and the council approved it, and then the next thing I know is four of the members just abruptly resigned, and so I was disbanded. Now, I think it's unfair for you to hold this council responsible for, you know, things that happened. We don't have a lot of, um, I don't know the word I wanna use, of what happens at the bottling plant. I know that we've been struggling with the leaseholder for the last three years, and we hope to see. we hope to see some action by the end of this month. Other than that, I would like to discuss a few other things. We had a Lola meeting up in Montague, it was really quite nice, everybody was commenting on the participation from all the cities. It didn't realize that Doris and Tulley were so far away, and got there on the other side of, but maybe it's because we haven't really had any weather that everybody came. But one of the, one of the topics that was really discussed thoroughly is this whole idea that Siskiyou County and Chester County are going to be dealing with the homelessness situation, and I know that, I have seen some postings on Facebook of a census that the nearest one to us is going to be, it's Mount Chester. On this, they have asked all the cities to participate, and unfortunately, they've also put a monetary value as to for the cities, you know, they've sort of, you know, decided how much each city should contribute, so I talked to the person in charge, and I've made a very small commitment on our part that doesn't break our bank, so that we are included in the database. We don't have a huge homelessness situation, but it'd be good idea for us to participate formally, so that if any monies, you know, get applied to this federally or from the state, we are in line for it also. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Keisler.
First of all, Brenda, Alan, Randy, Paul, Mark, these are all the names of city managers that I've had to deal with since that meeting, and you're right, the ball got dropped a little bit, but all the players quit us, so I hear what you're saying, I'll take it into consideration, and I will ask the city manager that maybe we can put on the agenda to revisit the historic district.
Management committee.
Management committee, re-resurrect, revisit, whatever we need to do. The man has a valid point, it was a hot issue, but I'm not the guy that guides the box on doors and how many come in your building, I want to take a look at your stuff, so the right people on that committee is crucial, that's, that's, I would like to see that done.
Okay, can I just say that on the agenda today is discussion about committees, so.
Okay.
Talk obviously.
All right.
We'll be talking about those.
Yeah. Another thing is, I, I want to apologize for leaving the meeting early last night, a lot of surgery coming up, and I was just early, so I commend you guys for what you came up with, it's holistic, it's cool, so I want to thank everybody that came and participated in that meeting. That's about all I got right now, I'm sure I was up here.
Mr. Frank.
Just briefly wanted to address some of the comments that Peter made as well, you know, my apologies for being cryptic, but there's an ongoing lease negotiation with the property owner, or with a leasie, I guess, of the property and the owner being the city, and so we're not going to betray those confidences in a public meeting, the city manager's working on that, we don't know enough to share anything more now, so it's certainly expected that those negotiations would be private. But the fact of the matter is that the city, the city's general fund receives quite a bit of money from that lease every year, and so it's, it's obvious and normal to be concerned about if that lease has not been re-upped, that we should be cautious about expenditures. So, that's all, I believe it's a private negotiation at this point, so. Another thing he said, and maybe, maybe Peter just misspoke, but something he said that is not the way I understand, the way that the revenues from that bottling plant go to the, to the general fund, it has nothing to do with municipal water rates and sewer rates, I don't think that those, I mean, he said to offset water and sewer rates, I can't imagine that was ever an actual point of discussion whenever the bottling plant. I know that many commitments back, this is a little bit before my time, but there were, there were a lot of promises made to the community at the time about the number of jobs, I know people pay that a lot, and, and it's a private business, we can't, you know, we can't dictate their, their operations, yes, we all wish it were more successful, but creating more jobs, hopefully they will in the future, but, you know, that's, that's not, that's not our job. We can hope, hope that things change there, but you're, you're a former mayor of this town, and one that did a lot of really things, good, good things that I'm proud of, so I hope that we're not putting out there for public consumption that, that the bottling plants' revenues have anything to do with municipal water rates or sewer rates and offset those revenues, go to the general fund. So I hope that was just a, perhaps a misstatement, but it's been said many times during my time here on the council, and who's to say, and again, that Peter has made incredible, incredible investments in our community, and has, you know, he's one citizen of the year and things like that, so when he speaks, this, this council does listen, but we also have to be realistic about our finances and what we can actually accomplish, and not overpromise things, but also, you know, be realistic. Code enforcement is a, is a huge issue all across the board, not just with the historic district, but we've had these conversations many, many times through many, many meetings, it's, there's, there's just, is not, the revenues to support a lot, a lot of that activity right now, hopefully in the future there will be, but it's very difficult. It's difficult and costly to follow up on that stuff, it just is. I wish it would be different. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Sir, there you go.
One more little thing.
Every little.
This little, this little handsome young man sitting in the back of the room, that's my grandson, Timmy, so he just come to live with us here, he's newest resident at Dubsmere, he's going to school, and, so I want to introduce him.
Welcome.
Biggie, Timmy.
All right, Lou, you're up, sorry.
Well, thank you. Things are going well, just wanted to touch bases on a couple things. I planned on starting giving the annual report, obviously as we finish the new calendar year, well, within the fiscal year, to kind of give you an update, but I was asked not to. The sheriff would like to attend most likely the second meeting in February, and he wanted to kind of present that annual report, so I thought rather than stealing his steam, I figured something important would be able to do that, so I'll go over from the council staff to be able to facilitate that. Hopefully, I do want to just touch on, though, sheriff's office as well as myself being involved in the city of Dubsmere, it will be helping participate in those three different census days that we'll be doing for the home coalition. So, even though we don't have a large transient population that comes here, ours is much more throughout the summer as travelers, whether they be PCTers or people on the rails or just traveling through as they come in May, it does affect our community and it is a part of that. So we're going to be participating on the three different types of census days, one of them is looking for actual camp up places, people, places that are normally structured that people live in, places that people would kind of collect, and then the transient population is where are people giving services in most areas, those are the three main focus areas of these census of different days that we'll take in.
It's a appointed time census, is that right?
It is, it's a appointed time census, the goal, of course, is to get three different snapshots of three different population groups to see kind of what their needs are, as a way to measure that throughout the county and our different communities, to see what resources are available, which ones are currently being used, which ones can be enhanced, replaced, or created. There are a lot of services available, the idea is not to duplicate, it's to enhance and support what are being placed that are further developed those, so we're going to be able to participate in helping that. Mr. Ed Ketchus is our contact for the sheriff's office, part of that, in fact, I'll be helping him on Monday to work some of those out. I just, Kai Tu, in the same mind of, of our city manager, we kind of wanted to bring one of our deputies out, kind of working behind the scenes a little more than the front of scenes, so that you two can see our face. This is Deputy Joseph Lenzing, Deputy Lenzing is new to our department, but not new to the area, he has quite a family history, his dad worked as peace officer in the city of Mount Chester, his grandfather Gordon Lenzing worked for our sheriff's office, retired as a master detective, came back, driving boats, and all those things that prepared cops like to do instead of preparing to stay around the house. So, we're glad to have Joe around, so if you see him, say hi, we're putting in the work hard and fast, so you can learn all those things you need to know.
Well, Timmy, we should have you go arrest somebody now that I've got to be introducing.
After the meeting.
After the meeting, after.
Yeah, I'm going to do that, but thank you, so that's all that.
Okay. Thank you, sir, any questions, anything I can answer? Okay. Uh, fair, oh, yes, ma'am.
I do have a question for you, sir. I keep getting asked, I said that you used to give us a, you know, a detailed report of how many, you know, break-ins and stuff like that, all I want to know is, people want to know, are you ticketing people?
Yes.
Because it seems that.
Look, he's waving, he's a stickler.
I just grew up in a family.
Because every time, I walk, you know, I walk, I walk daily, and I can't believe how many people speed by even a butterfly.
There is no doubt people that still don't get more attention, in certain areas, there's no doubt about that, but with the different traffic surveys that we'll be doing, with the radar that we're running in those areas, quite frequently we get concerns, either on Butterfly or South First or at the bus stops, or up at the schools or coffee shops first thing in the morning, or any of those areas, we just kind of rededicate some of our focuses, maybe for the next two days, and once you're out there where the buses are coming out, to try again, remind people, hold people accountable of those kind of actions, so it is very much in place.
Well, good job, Ray.
Yes, you said that, but he, he.
Is that what?
He told something else that he.
It was like he was waving a flag.
Okay, this is my turn, so taking my swing at the bat with Mr. Art, I agree, as Mr. Frank said, that we owe you and everything you do a tremendous democratic, I respect you, and I look forward to your comments and your suggestions and your prompts in the book, but to let you know that it wasn't a matter of ignoring you, number one, I called city manager and said, let's talk about it during the committee assignments, that's first of all. Second of all, I talked to, number one, our city planner, Arlene Digges, and I talked with Ron McCloud, and I talked with Julie Iskra, and Julie Iskra, for instance, gave me the actual ordinance from 2004 that had stated the committee, I've got the Stafford order that went along with it, Mr. McCloud informed me, and the one person I wasn't able to talk to was Barbara Cross, I reached out to her, but I didn't get a call back. It's my understanding, and the reason I said that it was a matter of discussion, is because each person had a little bit of the puzzle, just like Mr. Keisler had a little bit of the puzzle, and you have your particular view on what you remember and what you want it to be, and the discussion at this point is, I believe, is, is that we should help and support the planning commission in reaching out and finding three members, but as I understand it, it's under the planning commission, it says the two members, it was actually increased, the reason we have seven members on the planning commission.
Yep.
Was because two members were specifically put out there to be part of this committee. I don't believe that, maybe I'm wrong, and I'll go for the suggestions or some other viewpoint, though when I thought of it, and I talked to Ron McCloud, it seemed to me pretty clear that Barbara Cross, our chairman of the planning commission, should say, I'm going to reach out, I'm going to talk with the city manager, and we'll put an advertisement in the paper for three people, but I don't think it's something that I as a mayor or we as a council should be doing, should we?
No.
Should we be appointing the other three members, or should that not be under the planning commission?
What three members?
To the historic district management committee, which is what Mr. Art was talking about, the, the committee that had existed and was brought to life back in 2004.
Because they answered to the planning commission.
They answered to the planning commission. Yes, ma'am?
If I can possibly explain, there used to be up prior to 2004, the planning commission of five members and what we call HUDM, Historic District Management Commission, those were combined, and what they did is two of the members from HUDM became members of the planning commission, and now we have a seventh member of the planning commission. Two of those members are, are the delegates, if you will, for the historic district, one is the planning commission chair, which is Barbara Cross, the second is another member of the planning commission, currently that's Don Harley, and so they review and specialize in the downtown historic district as part of their service to the planning commission.
Now, beyond that, when they made that, well, that move was done in 2004, so in this last iteration, when there were more people than the two of them, how did that come to be, that there were more than just the two of them?
There are not. The historic district management commission was dissolved.
Okay.
And in its place, two of those members now serve on the planning commission.
Okay, so there really is no other committee as far as you're aware?
That is correct.
The vote in 2014 by the city of Dubsmere.
Mr. Art, I'll for this time, wait, call and allow you to answer, but after that, go ahead, sir.
The vote under Mayor Keisler was for the city of Dubsmere to appoint five members of HUDM, that was the vote that five members of the city council took.
Thank you. You look back, did not see that, is that correct?
I did not look at that, I strictly needed the information about the.
I had the resolution.
Well, here's what I'd like to do, we'll put it on the next agenda, please, and we'll do all the final research, in fact, Mr. Art, you and I can meet with Mr. Brannigan, and we can talk this over outside of the council, be glad to work it out, we'll have it on the next council meeting, and we'll come to a resolution, how does that sound?
It's good, I hope you invite Ron McCloud, who is the father of the historic district, his testimony was, for 20 years, HUDM worked up that.
I understand. Okay, beyond that, moving on to my next area, I want to talk about what happened last night and kind of give everyone who wasn't there a sense of what we accomplished, and I thought it was another example of the spirit that I think is really alive in our city, the sense of coming together as a community in consensus. So, at the first vision workshop that Mr. Brannigan put on back in December, we had six different tables, around 35 different people, everyone kind of put in for two hours, they were supposed to kind of be more segmented, but they all ended up putting in some greens and some golds and some whatevers, and so since that first meeting, Mr. Brannigan sat down and came up with a, a list of the various items that showed up repeatedly throughout the, kind of the main headings, if you will, if you wanted to take them and put them into an outline, that's what he did, and so from that, he brought together these items last night, and we had about 15 to 20 people, it wasn't as intended as we could have, the advertising could have been better, but the point was that in essence, I think it worked out really well, and the reason was that we had a few people who were each in their own ways, editors, picklers, English writers, and then we had everybody else just kind of working and, and under the leadership of Mr. Brannigan, and with the help of our city clerk, Julie Iskra, we were able to come up at the end of it, and I was really proud of this, I think that we all felt really good about this, we came up with a vision statement. Now, the vision statement is meant to be short, it's meant to be something that everybody can digest, that we can all buy into as a community, some places have vision statements that are three and four paragraphs long, we settled on the idea, we were able to bring it down to two sentences, and the, the second sentence has four points to it, so it's not something that a sixth grader could memorize, but in any case, this is what we came up with, go ahead and read it, and this is in draft format, it will eventually be brought back to the council for adoption, since there were four of the five members at the meeting last night, I have a feeling this is probably not going to be contentious with the council, but here it is. "In Dubsmere, we commit to building on our heritage while enhancing the quality of life for all. We collaborate to foster pride, develop a vibrant, diverse economy, preserve our mountain environment, and celebrate our active and creative community." That's awesome, good job. Now, that was come up with by the group, it was come up with, with, I think you could get this and that, and this and that, at one point we had three openings, we had We The People Of Dubsmere, that got, that got tossed pretty quick, but the point is, this is what a group of people, this group, came up with, and. and decided that this is how they could best describe the essence of who we are and a vision of who we are. The next step will be at some other future date to be determined soon. We'll have our next meeting, which I guess we'll work on vision and goals, right?
Vision.
Vision, I'm sorry, vision goals. Okay, that's all I have for this evening. Yes, ma'am?
Just a couple things from the office. The checks are done and ready to be signed. If you have time, any time after eight o'clock in the morning, stop by for super juice. Karen, we really appreciate that.
Sure.
And this is not on the agenda, so I don't know if I can possibly get some direction to staff. I have an email from Terry Jones with the Tourism and Improvement District. Of course, I mentioned that last night at the meeting. They are receiving a recommendation and reaching out to the cities to see what our thoughts are about purchasing banners to go on the streetlights downtown. It would be totally paid for by the Tourism and Improvement District. I got back to him and told him we had done this a few years ago, and we'll see a few of those banners still up in town. But I needed to check a few and see what your thoughts were, so I could get back to him and give him a general consensus of what the thoughts are. That would be something you'd like to consider. Again, it wouldn't be any cost to us at the city, and they're just reaching out to see if that was a good idea.
Is that something I have to go through the planning commission?
Um, was previously approved, a marketing...
No, I think it's perfect. Since it's something that's been done before, and the council was familiar with the past, and if they're okay with what we're going for.
Free banners? Hell, yes!
That's kind of my thought, too.
Yeah!
My guess, the banner is, are there any of the red ones?
The red balloon.
Red balloon, yeah.
Yeah, it says, "Welcome to the city of Doug'smere," or "For Black and Your..."
Right, okay. I was just thinking that the Discover Siskiyou initiative, the district, my guess is probably going to be not specific to any city, probably a county-wide, because it's a county-wide initiative, marketing initiative. So if it is sort of general, like, I'd love to see us not just do all of those banners and have a mixture, you know, like alternating, like the Doug'smere specific one, but then also the one promoting the general effort. If we do in fact do that, I think that'd be good.
Do you think we should have a proposal coming back? You just got to get a sense of what they'd like to do?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll...
It's okay for me to just continue corresponding with them.
Yeah, sure.
Tentatives, if they're interested and if we'd like more information.
No objection?
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so moving on to the next, we have our... We have our considered agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt a considered agenda.
Has been moved and seconded, all fair.
Aye.
Aye. Approved, next, no public hearing. Next, no old business. Next, 3A audit services budget amendments. Mr. Brannigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. For your consideration tonight as a budget amendment, along with a contract change order for additional services that were unanticipated during the scope of work that was sent out and bid, competitively bid. And our auditor, Charles here, has been doing an amazing job in communicating some of the things that he's finding through his study of prior audits and what we actually have coming in now. And two of the things before you tonight that were brought up, one is the pension obligations, where they were, the prior audits were incorrectly interpreted, not just Doug'smere, but it's been found that they are incorrectly interpreted, and it is most likely that there's going to be adjustment that will need to be made for that as well. Another one that was...
Can I ask you a question for you?
Sure.
I just want to be clear, when you say adjustments, right now, we're looking at adjusting to actually determine what needs to be done, whether maybe a future adjustment in terms of budget down the line after the investigation takes place. Am I understanding this correctly?
No, on the prior audits, they did not report them correctly, as far as liability from scores.
Okay.
Or from pensions.
Right.
And in that same token, our score assessment, there was some discovery there that there were some errors in how things were reported that will need to be addressed as well. And I'd like to, since I did the staff report, and Charles has been back this whole week, we've got a couple other items that are going to need some attention as well. And in talking with Charles, what I have here is 17 hours for him to not exceed. But there's a couple more items that came up that we believe that we might get three more hours added in there as far as contract change order and for budget adjustment request.
So 450?
Um, it would bring the contract up to, contract change order up to, what is that, $3,000? Which would be $1,000 from each account. And that feels, should be sufficiently to cut your costs. And Charles, do you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, and just to kind of give you a little bit of...
If you could hold it, we have a microphone in the house, can you, CD camera, let's see it.
Just to give you a little bit of, a little bit more detail on that. When we, when we take over an audit from a previous auditor, we've got to do a lot of work on opening balances. We have to get comfortable with those. So part of the, part of the things we will do is, we will actually go in and review every single work paper that they did. We will verify those, that they, you know, that they didn't make any errors in those opening, to come up with those ending balances, which are this year's opening balances, right? And so in doing that with other cities that have been taken over from AGT, the Gatsby 68 pension area is one where we've, where I've discovered the need for a prior period adjustment. So when we find a problem with an opening balance, if it's minor, I can just waive it, make the entry in the current year, and not bother with any kind of restatement. But if it's material enough, then we have two choices. One is to get them to reissue and do all the work, or do a prior period adjustment. And so what basically you will see is, when it comes down to that fund balance equity that you guys have at the end of this year, we always start with the current year change, and then the beginning fund balance, and then you've got your ending fund balance, right? That beginning fund balance will have to be adjusted. And so the Gatsby 68 area, which is your pension area, which is this mandate that came down three years ago from this being the third year, that you now have to put your pension liability on books. And it's all done through CalPERS, and it's all done through calculating the entire plan for the entire state, and then drilling it down to this particular plan that you have for the city, for your miscellaneous employees and your safety employees. So you've got to go through, and you've got to come up with lots of accounting jargon that will just go over everybody's head, so I'm not even going to go into that. But basically, the interpretation was, when AGT was doing these reports, when they were doing their analysis of what these balances should be, they misinterpreted some items, which caused them to come up with different year-end balances at 63016, which are my open, you know, your opening balances for this year. So they, I've gone over this with them, when I found it with the first city that I did, which, well, I don't even mention the city, but anyway, they were in agreement. And so when it came to the couple other cities that I'm doing, I told Mark right up front that, yeah, this area is going to require adjustment, prior period adjustment.
I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor, is, why are they not doing the work to make the correction?
Well, they could have done it on this one, but it, it's not something that they need to reissue on. It's something that, that is fine with a restatement. It's, it's not material enough to do a whole reissue of the previous audit report. Yeah, so it's something that, I guess, we could have made that decision, but, yeah.
My question would be, I assume that we're not expected to understand too much of what's going on here from our level. What would you expect us to understand to make a decision on this?
Well, just basically, the need to, the need to make the prior period adjustment. You know, the fact, hopefully, the understanding is that this is something that needs to be done. The opening balances, as we've discovered, let's, for instance, the score assessment. You know, that's a pretty large payable that the city's been working down since 2014. That should have been booked as a liability, and it never was.
Now, how would that change, how would that change our life as a city if it had been booked?
If it had been booked, it would just be more transparent. The audit report would have shown a larger liability on the books. Everybody would have known, seen that this was the only thing, you know, for, for instance, on the score assessment and the liability, it's a good chance that maybe only the council and the city staff, some of the city staff actually knew that that was, you know, a payable, and that that was due and payable, and you had a balance that you, or an amount every year that you were paying off, paying this thing down, right?
Just in the interest of the public's interest, we brought it up in separate public meetings.
Yeah, good, yeah, I mean, and, and, but then you might only have the amount of public that are here. So anyways, it just, it's something that should have been booked in the audit as a, as a one-time liability, and then your payments would work that down over the, over the years. I, again, I discussed this with AGT when I found it, and they are in agreement. They were, just, just, again, it was sometimes when you have a transaction, you have to identify the transaction, so you know how to account for it.
So what you're saying, Mike, you're talking about a reporting system, situation, a reporting situation, and that's something that's going to say, "Hey, we found that she lost a lot of money somewhere."
Right, right.
That's what I want to be clear of.
Both of these, both of these adjustments that we, that I found, and then the other couple that have come up as well, they are not finding additional liabilities, if you will. I mean, there's not something, "Oh, you, you know, you've lost more money than you thought," or something like that, no.
Okay.
These are, these are just some, something that is mandatory to make and run through. So again, so those opening balances are materially correct, if you will.
Okay, do we have any other questions, comments, or questions from the council?
Uh, I've got, I do have a question.
Sure.
Specifically with regard to the score assessment liability. And I'm going to have to orient here with just a brief comment, which is, my understanding of that is that because we are self-insured, essentially, SCORE is a, is a pool of small cities that come together and pool funds together, but it's not really insurance in that you're paying a premium for some amount of coverage. There are layers that kind of do that, but, but the base layer of coverage that we get is really the premiums we pay minus claims against the city, basically are one-to-one, and if we don't pay enough in the premium, which are set, and the claims are more than that, then it begins to build up. And my understanding is that, over the course of many years, they don't, they don't necessarily make an assessment against the city because they're hoping that it will sort of shake out in the end by having less claims in the future, and your premiums, you can kind of weather a little bit of a storm. And then, then the, then the assessment, but, but we didn't weather a storm. There were too many claims, and then an assessment was made around $250,000, $290,000, something like that, I can't remember.
Well, the net assessment was 347, and they did a credit memo, so ended up about 295.
Okay. And so we've been paying that off on a sort of five-year payment plan.
Right.
We're in the fourth year of the five-year plan.
Right.
Seventy-something thousand this year, close to 100,000 next year.
Right.
That's all, not all of it is coming out of our general fund, but a large piece of it is.
Yeah, they're, they're spread over the funds.
Right. So my question is, it says here, that assessment was made, payment arrangement, like I mentioned, but additional claims since the assessment have been filed, but not recorded for financial statement purposes. So SCORE has not made another assessment based on...
Yes, they have.
They have, okay.
Yeah, so SCORE had the original assessment, which was the balance of the assessment at 63014. That's the 295 net.
Yes.
Then they had more assessments, 1415 actually was zero assessments. Then they had more assessments in 1516, and then they have an additional assessment in 1617.
Okay.
So as of 1516, the prior period adjustment is, I think it was, is it okay if I say the number?
Yeah.
It's roughly 270,000, and be the prior period adjustment, as of 63016. So that's the 295 minus your payments in those first two fiscal years, 1415, 1516, plus the additional assessments.
Got it, okay.
Right.
So those have been filed, or they have, I'm sorry, those have been assessed?
They have been assessed, they, you've got an invoice.
And, okay, and, and now...
But I think what Pam, I think when Pam and maybe the previous person even, I'm not sure, I think maybe Pam was here in 2016, they didn't know what to do with it, because they, it was all part of this special assessment thing. And because the auditor had not booked it before, Pam said, "I didn't know I was even supposed to book it."
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Got it.
But it is a measurable, it is a measurable, and it's a payable. It's a measurable payable, which is the two criterias, is it payable and is it measurable? And the answer is yes on both of those, so it should be booked.
Okay. Okay, that clears up my questions.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, if there's any questions from the council, I'll open the podium to public comments. The public comment uploads the podium. Open it up to comment from council members.
I just have a question, so would you, are you asking us to revise the staff report?
Yes.
An increased unit?
Yes, I am. So the...
Instead of 2550, it'd be 3,000?
Correct.
And instead of 850, it'd be 1,000 per fund?
Yeah, and that 850 is not in the motion, but it's in the comments.
Right, but we're just trying to keep our numbers straight. Is that incorrect?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
I agree, it was absolutely correct.
If there's no other thing, then...
I do have a question.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just curious, and this is maybe not a question for, for our auditor, but the, maybe for staff.
Sure.
But now that we know that the current assessment amount, which I think you said included the, around 100 or 100, and maybe it's for this year and next, next year, 70 and 100, close to 100, plus the new assessments, total's about 270 now?
270.
Before they...
The total, the total now, after your October payment, is a rough, I think, 160.
Okay.
So that's including every assessment we've got. So that's the balance that you owe now.
Okay.
I'm saying the prior period adjustment that I have to make.
Yes.
To get everything at 63016 correct, is roughly 270, 277, or I can't remember the exact number, but within that 270 range.
I'm just trying to understand, and maybe this is better done at a finance committee meeting or something, but is our future payments going to be similarly, you know, spaced out in the way that they have been, which was started at, you know, 40 grand, and then 60 grand, and they were, they got bigger and bigger as we completed the assessment period? Yeah, that's going to be a discussion. With SCORE? We're going to have a SCORE. Okay. City, you got to give us a little bit of a break. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Yeah. All right, we'll now move to authorize the contract change order with the city's auditor, not to exceed $3,000, but to authorize the mayor to sign the attached budget adjustment request form.
Will you hear a second? I hear a second. Hold on, a vote call, please.
Councilor Shonton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teichler?
Aye.
Councilor Craig?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye. Is it unanimous for all that were present at that moment?
Mr. Ray?
Can I leave the vote? I would like to take a favorite moment...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice evening, and I'm sure, thank you, it's really nice to meet you all.
I would like to take this moment to, to recognize a fellow council member. I've been seeing in the paper all these guys that went down to the fires down south. We have our own hero right here. Who else from here we're with you?
Uh, excuse me, I lose my voice. But I went down with Morgan Uier and Captain from Mount Shasta, Corvins. We made friend, and fellow firefighter, Brian Taylor, good friend, Brady Crowson as well, both firefighters from the city of Doug'smere, too. We went down on a Castella engine, but, you know, we operate this one, so. Went down there, and we rejoined with Ingersoll, Edna, Mount Shasta, Lake Shastina, and... and we rejoined with, uh, Inches from Edna, Alchasta, Lake Shastina, and, um, I'm not gonna get into that, unfortunately.
Well, I have to thank you first.
Thank you.
And Mr. Schreiber, I recognize the appearance of Councilman, um, Spurlock in our meeting. Moving on, next one we have. All right, here we go. Next we have the committee assignment, perfect copies, sir, review and possible changes. So, um, starting off, let's assume that we would have the same, I'm opening the suggestions of changes, but starting off, we have, uh, let's run through committees, economic development and tourism. I, I would prefer to stay on that, Mr. Spurlock?
I'd prefer to stay as long.
Any challenges?
Nope.
Finance, Mr. Craig and Vishanta?
I'm fine with it.
Fine with it?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Public facilities, Mr. Craig and Mr. Kaiser?
I'm cool.
We basically don't need, most of the issues come before the council. You could make an argument that there's a great need to meet or you can make an argument that there's not a great need to meet because the issues come before the council, so I'm fine to stay on it, but we don't, if we need, as needed, yeah.
As needed, okay. And it says that, means it's needed. Uh, public safety also means it's needed, we've had, uh, you, Mr. Craig as mayor and I guess, uh, Mr. Spurlock continued on because of his role in the fire department, um, do you want to continue on or do you want me to take that out as mayor?
Actually, if I, you're supposed to assume that because you answer to your police chief and those are, that's between the mayor and the police chief. So, yeah.
I would still like to continue.
Does anyone challenge Mr. Spurlock continuing on?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and take the lead role on that, Mr. Spurlock will be my second for public safety and, uh, welcome being scheduled up next time.
I'm sorry, um, that sounds great, um, I'm just curious, that, that is just another as, as needed, I remember there was some discussion about, though, those are, are those meetings not public anymore?
No.
Um, does the public safety?
They're watching the meeting, then the city comes down and we don't want to be told that we're doing raids in public because in the public, we know, so it became closed session.
When I? If I, I know, I have a little story to share. So part of the challenge, quite frankly, ran into place with the new city manager, every turnaround, there was a fracturing of information. The goal of the committee was created to overcome those fractures, allow consistency among the board, the operating pieces, uh, not necessarily the council, but bring that to the council. Now we have a city manager in place, the conversation is much more ongoing and current, so that need for that refreshing was no longer in place.
Yes.
So resolve that, leaving it in its smallest form so that annually, biannually, anytime that there is an issue or concern, that we could meet in a public setting, a loud forum, but most of the things would just be handled day to day, uh, as, as I think they work best and they were very well known, by the way.
Now, let me ask you this, though, in, in an emergency, is there any role that this committee would play or is it just through the mayor and?
To support your staff and say, good job?
Yeah.
Well, you're right, it's a vote call, so it's all. There's a fire chief that says, go open up the Kennedy building.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with the public safety committee, that's just the call that the mayor would get. Frankly, the, uh, the emergency, reading the purpose, to address local and regional policing issues, fire service issues, emergency plan, code enforcement and animal control. Uh, code enforcement and animal control are under the authority of the city manager. We have a task force for emergency plan, fire service issues and regional policing issues, I mean, I, I, I think we should abolish the public safety committee, there's no need to keep it there.
Just dissolve because we do have a city manager in place.
Right.
I thought we had dissolved this committee.
It's on this list, let's do it again.
I, I, I'd be willing, well, yes, sir.
I, I actually thought that we dissolved this one and went further down, solid waste, so I don't know why solid waste would show up.
Oh, you're right, we did dissolve that.
You're right, Mr. Mayor.
Let's consider it dissolved, is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of that. I just, depending on, back off what he had said was, this is where I was mayor and there was no city manager, I was kind of just filling those gaps and getting all that information just so we knew what was going on, we haven't met since then, so.
That's, it was dissolved.
So if there's no objection, we'll leave this?
Yes. Public safety and as such, and solid waste was.
Say the solid waste, I agree.
Okay.
We have dissolved.
We have, yes. In the middle of that, we have airport. Um, right now, I know I'd like to stay, I know Mr., I know, well, but Mr. Spurlock, he'd like to stay, I understand that you'd like to be on it, but?
And that is up to Mr. Spurlock, do you think city may not do anything?
I'd like to stay, but what I spoke with Bruce about is meeting on Fridays, probably in the morning or afternoon, uh, because that would be really the only time during the week, Bruce said that would be acceptable to the committee.
Yeah, we'll check with the rest of the members, I assume that'll be fine, if not, then we'll have to revisit it, how does that sound?
It sounds good.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, appreciate that. Okay, moving onward, um, CDBG loan committee, Vishanta?
Yes, we only met once and we got our business done and so there hasn't been anything to be, any reason to meet again.
So you'd like to stay though?
Yes.
Okay. Cabinet's task force, you all want to continue on or do you want to?
Oh, yes, we're not going to start with new members.
Dismissed.
Great, what was it?
Was it cabinet, dude, see that word?
Wow, we've gotten that up with that one.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, next word, ad hoc committees, Mossbury Falls, um, I'd like you guys to continue, take it across the finish line, what do you think?
Please. Yes, um, I am, I am proposing a change to the purpose of this committee though.
Okay.
Um, as it states right now, to assist stakeholders in obtaining, constructing and maintaining an ADA compliant public access to Mossbury Falls, I propose we change it to, to assist stakeholders in and then cross out everything to the word public and insert the word creating before that, so in the word, to assist stakeholders in creating public access to Mossbury Falls. The reason why is because the current proposal is not ADA compliant, we're not going after that, uh, for a very number of reasons. Um, obtaining, um, we're really looking to, um, to get some sort of easement or lease of, of land and not ownership. Um, constructing, um, again, the city would not be doing the, the constructing of that, so, I think, I think just to say creating, to assist stakeholders in creating public access, I think is more appropriate.
To Mossbury Falls?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, unless there's an objection from somebody, we'll just do it.
No objection, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You got that? Thank you.
Protocols, uh, was that, is that still alive or is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's been like, what, four years?
Well, no, it was never completed.
Not a little longer. Yeah, 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 we just never, then the council never adopted the protocols document because Mr. Johnson at the time had some issues with it, I believe they were pretty minor and we just, just have never picked it up since then. Um, but, um, yeah.
Can we just finish it?
Yeah, let's just finish it.
So you two are still there and?
Josh and I are gonna work really hard on that and we're gonna bring it to the council.
Cool, sounds good.
You sat down with a smile on your face.
I see a grimace.
The sad, I mean, the reality on my part is it's five months, I'm gonna be committed Monday through Friday, so I'm a Friday.
But you're Saturday and Sunday, is it urban?
To study. And to do my.
It's basically, don't worry about it.
They're fighting for that.
Watch out. I'm good.
That's amazing, my turn.
So, yeah.
No opposition.
Uh, next one, we have this kind of an odd child, uh, audio and video system in council chambers. So, yeah, I think right now, why don't we just knock that one off and pick it up on the other end?
All right, it's Nixon.
It's Nixon.
Next.
Still manager recruitment?
That one, ever again. Ever again.
Mark is saying over there, the grin on his face, I think Mr. Nixon said, any objection?
I'm just saying, they do the main event on.
I think we're happy with that selection, man.
Very, very.
All right. Okay, we have assignment, League of Local Agencies, Lola, and we have Craig and Kaiser on that right now.
Do you mind, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Under the ad hoc, I think maybe where you want to add the, uh, the solid waste and sewer rate, uh, committee formation?
Yeah, yeah, um.
And talk about who should be appointed.
Okay, yeah, I think we should, um, you know, we've been.
Um, citizens committee for, uh, let's see, uh?
Service rates?
Yeah, citizens committee for service rates.
Nobody will understand what the hell that is, they probably need a better.
Sewer and refuse?
Or is it gonna take, uh, sewer and solid?
Sewer and solid.
So why don't we start with sewer?
Rate committee, yeah.
Right, that's good.
Rate committee, that's good.
Right, very good, is that new?
It's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
We'd be shared.
Someone's had to.
So I'd, I'd like to volunteer for that, who else would like to be on that?
I think it's pretty full, I would love for someone else to.
That plate is a shame.
Looking away.
All right.
Okay, so, Mr. Kaiser and myself will take on that, that'll be fun.
We're gonna get to, there's art in here still, here? Okay.
Anything else in the ad hoc?
Sounds like a goose.
I don't know. One of the techs is letting me, it's a person.
Train's a person.
Father Koker is out there.
You got the front end of that?
Josh, you look very, very, you're.
Thank you. I came straight from the last meeting, he was at a Christmas uniform, wasn't he? That two for two is here.
What's he expect, what's he expect, man?
Um, is it okay if we just have a five-minute recess, I need to use the restroom?
Sure, go quick, let me get three minutes, how does that sound?
Great.
How long it takes?
This is my bad, should I get the, it's kidding. Are we getting up and down?
Yeah. What? Yeah, we're, 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 we're gonna do the first part.
Was it a goose?
No.
President Mayor, if I may?
You know, the.
We're already gonna have a break, it's a good time.
I told him, I grabbed my pocket, I'm grabbing a dis, I kept on going, but.
Where are they going, where are you going?
My wife called, won't forget it. Thanks to you, we had another meeting, but don't visit without sex, like how many are on us?
You know, you're my.
Hopefully quite a few. It's, it's been quite a while since the other ones. Thank you very much, have a good night. We'll be in service.
Wait, there we are. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you here in the community.
Last one.
Can't find it.
Pretty good. Just shaking hands and kissing babies and running. Like, no, no, no! But I haven't been to this house since, okay. That's great. Tell you what, it's not, you know, everybody. I'm sorry, please.
Pretty good, pretty, pretty far.
Yeah.
Michael's this morning, I choose.
I'm just waiting.
Great.
That's sad.
That was awesome. I feel like it was, it's minus four and a half now. It's like, it's just, I mean, it's true, it has to be.
Yeah, in my own step, I had it.
All of a sudden, it's like, first of all, it's crazy, so I feel like using that transition to the kindergarten.
He had to wait for the. It's not a, it's a, it's a. Yeah, that's a little brother just turned out, um, just started to.
We got it really fast.
That looks good. It's, I'm not on, uh, older transport, uh, the, the. Right now, it's not.
Anything else?
All ready?
Josh, look at you.
I'm ready.
Ready? Oh, that's right, marketing's still up. Been beating the rushes there, but.
Really? So we're?
All right. League of Local Agencies, we're back in possession, League of Local Agencies, uh, I guess, you want to stay on that?
My understanding was, this is basically just the mayor.
Okay, so myself and, uh, you as backup?
I actually, I don't understand how, well, I'm just curious, but, um, is this really an assignment, is everyone can go to the Lola dinners? The mayor traditionally gives some sort of, uh, you know, recap of what's going on in the city at the dinners, but there, this isn't really an assignment, is it?
No, I think what I'm looking at here, we have to go back and look at it, um, it, it is, the purpose is, uh, the select committee makes appointments of council members to serve on county boards, commissions representing city interests, that's not, for instance, I intended that meeting to put on the transportation.
Yeah, okay, okay, then it does, then it does have a purpose.
Yeah, so this is not Lola as in showing up at the meeting, this is the idea that once periodically, they have a county-wide, um, where they look at boards and determine who's gonna be on it.
Got it.
So I'll be a member of that and, uh, you want to be the second on that, have to serve as mayor?
Sure.
Okay, that'll be a good precedent for that. Any other questions, any objections?
No.
Next onward, Erwin.
I have no idea how many need to solve.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I wasn't even aware that I was.
Yeah, and, and this group really hasn't met, uh, I don't think at all since, in pretty much in the last year, um, I don't remember you being put on either, but, uh, it's really, um, it's something that the city participates in that I have, I'm actually also the chair of, of the working group there, the, um, RWA, which is Regional Water Action Group, which is the working group for this whole program in a region.
So it's one of those meets as needed things?
Uh, oh yeah, totally, meets as needed, and it really, there only needs to be one person anyway, it's great to have an alternate, but generally I wouldn't.
No, I have no idea how I.
Okay. So let's, let's remove Shanta, I'll stay on there, um, but occasionally I bring the city manager to those meetings, so that is kind of, um.
Do we leave Steele on there?
I, I think we could try, I don't think this even needs a citizen member, honestly, um, the meetings are public, anybody can come to the meeting, a citizen member doesn't really have any authority or role, I don't think, there.
Okay, so we're removing Shanta and we're removing Steele and other than that, no other changes?
And, well, just to say that, let's remove the whole citizen member.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. SCORE, city manager, were you on there, Mr. Craig, because of the finance?
Um, yeah, and, um, honestly, like, that, if it's okay with everyone, I'll stay on that, just because, uh.
Nobody wants to learn what you're offering, learn.
There's a lot to learn.
Right, cool, there we go.
Uh, Neighborhood Watch?
Do you think that that was an assignment, Neighborhood Watch is just a neighborhood watch?
It's actually. Community involvement and.
Right.
They did, and they become.
They asked in front of council if a representative from council could come to... They asked me, because I resurrected it, so that's how I got put back in there.
I think it's somewhat ceremonial, but I think it's unbelievable.
It's been working out the way it is, and we've been rotating with the two of you guys.
So one of them shows up, and we just sit there and listen to people in Missouri this time.
Sometimes we get three of us. We're also in scattered areas. We don't talk business, but it works out well.
All right.
But I'd like to stay on there.
You do.
You too, Shell. Next, Local Agency Formation Commission.
LAFCA.
This is...
Never even heard of it.
Uh, LAFCA? This is, yeah, this is the thing. So before, we said the Lola, the mayors get together. This is the other thing that they use, LAFCA. LTC was one as well, I believe, but this is one of the other ones.
Deal for renovation and changes of property lines?
Yeah, exactly. Local Agency Formation, exactly. So Tim Stern's on there right now as a representative of the cities.
Local representative.
On a couple. If I remember right, there was maybe going to be an opening, and then wasn't, but right now, Tim Stern represents the cities right now, so it really isn't a assignment of our city council at this time, but it could be in the future. So I think just leave it as it is, where it says reported by Lola Stern right now.
I think that's fine. Let's hear some objection to that.
Nope.
Okay, Siskiyou County Local Transportation Commission.
So that was the thing that I was appointed to as a...
By the law.
As a, yeah, that's right. As an alternate, but then the mayor of Fort Jones, remember his name? All of a sudden.
The CMO?
Tom.
Tom?
Tom.
Fort Jones?
Yeah. Great guy.
Yeah.
Can't remember his name, but wonderful guy. He announced that he was going to retire from this, so there should be a spot opening since I'm the alternate. I would get on there. You know, regardless, it's great that Dunsmere has some representation on there. So if it weren't me, it should be somebody else from Dunsmere, because it's been a long time, and we were able to get some of that sidewalk money because of our participation in that committee, so I'll stay on there for now.
Cool. I have no objection to that.
I will say, my record of attendance at those meetings has been poor the last couple of times. I've missed a couple, but it's been mostly procedural stuff, so I'll do better.
Siskiyou County, we, Mount Shasta-Dunsmere Trail Committee.
I don't remember, never... Well, I remember, I just don't think that we ever meet.
I've been to one meeting, and that's when the lady with the horses, they agreed to make it equestrian too. And then they said they have another meeting, and we've never met since.
So I've got to zero.
You've got the one.
Let me know when.
Okay, I will.
So we keep it alive?
Yeah.
Regional Integrated Waste Management Council.
I think that the mayor should go to the lead person there.
Okay.
And then swap you guys out, make you the alternate?
That's fine, unless somebody else wants to go. This is the sort of recycling committee at the county level. I've never been asked to go to a meeting, so...
I didn't want to meet the alternate in Deutsch, was he? Yeah. Dunsmere Recreation Parks District Board of Directors. We had those already appointed. We don't have somebody from the city council, so those won't be changed, will they? Only we have changed.
Well, the name's not there. Guy Shu.
I went through, and all three of those people have...
Do something to those.
All three of them.
Brian Wilson too?
Well, I know that Kenna has been appointed.
And we have two people that have been appointed.
And a preacher.
Chris Langston.
Yeah.
And we have the possibility of another appointment. I mean, we haven't received the application.
So they come to council?
No, we got your appointment.
Because they just elected to get one appointment for the one they...
But doesn't the council make the appointment?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to get an advertiser for that too, right?
I think we got one.
We already got one.
Oh.
So, there you go. Possibly next meeting.
Okay. Broadband will continue with that as before, since it's not really doing anything. Chamber of Commerce is on as economic development and tourism. I'd like to continue doing that, so...
Last item. The last item, oh!
I'm gonna, wait a second. We need to put on the cobbler, interpretive.
Well, that's right, we do. And there needs to be a letter going on to that. So what that is, is that Shanta's our primary, and I'm his first alternate, and Mr. Ilges is our second alternate. That's for the C2C, CI-HI-C. And that meets once a month.
And it always meets on the same exact time as the passport, the candidate's passport, so I have to, you have to know.
I can stop recording.
Well, at least I get to agenda.
Okay, onward and upward. Next item, last item. Mr. Brannigan.
Okay, this is where members of council. This is a similar staff report as to what was brought to the city council last year with the request to change the lease agreement to take the engine houses out of the lease and lower the lease amount to the minimum. This one here is looking, there's a map on the back there that's looking to remove what they call Building Number 6632. It is a building that is just north of the train depot or the museum that is right now. It's a two-story building that is, that the roof is having leaking issues, and we have security issues there as well. But the bottom level is being used for storage currently. I worked with the New Pacific staff, who is the one that's coordinating and contracting, to eventually demolish the building, is what they're looking to do, because of the security issues and certain liability concerns that these buildings have. And explained to this individual the use that we're having in that facility right now for storage. They were looking to try to get something going now, to probably get a move on it in the early spring. I explained that that building's being used for storage, and one of the main things that they use it for is the Dawgwood Days when they have the ice sales. But there are other items that are being stored there as well. He did agree to wait until after the Memorial Day Dawgwood Days event before they would have any kind of developments that would take place. I have been working with Blake, who's in the audience here, as well, as representative for the... I'm going to get it wrong, and I got it wrong on Stephanie's. What's the official name?
Dunsmere Depot Railroad Historical Society.
Yes, yes. So he's been the liaison with the city and the society, been keeping him up to speed on what's been going on with New Pacific. They originally asked to have a year time to get things moving there. And it's probably more in line of eight months from when we first started helping out it, not a four-year. But hopefully, we'll be able to assist them, maybe find some other places that they may be able to store some of their stuff as well. And Blake may have some comments he'd like to make as well when it comes to public comment. So that's it in a nutshell. There's the attached supplemental lease agreement and the map showing what will still be in the lease, and that they're leaving to the north. It's no longer in that section that we took out.
What I prefer to do is have him stand up and be part of the presentation, and we can ask questions, and then we can open a public comment at the back. Is that okay? Would you come up and give your side of the story, sir?
Hello, members of the council. I don't know how really it's side of the story, but I just wanted to say that I'm very appreciative to what I've been able to do with extending that timeframe of demolition. Because we are using it right now to store our pie social things. And so now we're looking at the future for what our future pie socials will look like and what equipment we'll need. So that's the story that I got.
Do you have any... Do you have any offhand ideas of where you might go to?
Well, so we're thinking of having the pie social in a building, maybe, maybe the community center. That's one. We have to, the Depot Committee, have to decide on this. We're thinking of having it there so that we don't have to have all of the pie cases. Currently, we have five pie cases that need to be stored, so that we can have the social down here in the parking lot. So we're thinking of moving that to a building, so we don't have to have those pie cases or the tables and chairs and those, all those items. Because right now, there's no space in the museum currently for all of that.
So to get rid of the pie cases? Not that it's any of my business. You can do whatever you want. I'm just curious.
Sure, great questions. The current plan maybe is to have some of the cases go inside the museum so that we could display more artifacts. There is quite a bit of city artifacts that we have in that storage that we must rotate in. So we're thinking of moving those cases inside, but some of them, all of them will not fit. So... That's our thought process right now.
Just curious, would that, if you moved it to some, like, a community building, would you need to store the pie cases there? I mean, they're so big, it's just a little not... How's that?
Other great questions. So the pie cases, we're thinking are in a precarious state, like, we can't move them much anymore. So currently, we have this pool valley that carries them in and out, but we're thinking that that they won't last much longer. So I would say no to putting the cases at the community center. I was thinking more along the lines of not needing to have the pie cases.
Yeah, we have the whole kitchen there now, and that's refrigeration, right? So I don't have all possible refrigeration.
There's usually a hundred and ninety-five pies?
Probably.
So, well, not all of them are refrigerated, but... And we do have some smaller racks that we might be able to find some space. One of the committee members, committee members does have storage space, so we're trying to maximize that to get all of what we have in the, we call it the annexed building, this 6623. In the annex, we're trying to reorganize his current storage space so that we can possibly not need any additional space.
Okay, so if anyone else wants to get involved in helping make decisions on where things go, would your next committee be?
We don't have that much right now. Probably in late March, late February, early March, when the other committee member comes up. He's a bit of a snowbird, or a sunbird, or whatever you want to call him. I'll tell you that somewhere later.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, yes, thank you.
So any other, any public comments? Public, open the podium for public comments. No public comment, closing the podium for public comment. Any comments here?
Yeah, all right, so... We've worked with, like, founders. We committed to breaking the lease.
There's nothing contractually, so the question, I'm not sure.
I do question.
Nothing, the question was about breaking the lease prior to Memorial Day. Mike?
After, is that what we're understanding of your staff report? Is that we're going to do a historical society up until Memorial Day to find a location for what they're selling there right now?
The conversation I have with New Pacific, Craig was a guy, I can't think of his last name. He said that he would make sure that, he's one of the contractors for work, would make sure that the work would not be done prior to the, whether it would be done after. I wasn't even aware of what that would be, other than assurances that he would provide the time for the locals. He's very considerate of the locals in Dunsmere.
Is that enough time for you, Blake?
Yeah, that should be fine. Yeah, and I was reading in the minutes too, that the lease agreement will change in July. Is that what I was thinking? So if they do change the lease in July, then I was assuming or thinking that we would have up until July. But also, if it's in demand, like, stuff with pie social, where in our minds, in the communities' minds, we're considering the pie social to be the last bait of the use of the annexed building.
I just want to make sure that you guys have enough time to... I hate to see you get rid of all those pie, what do you call them, cases?
What we call pie cases, they could be display cases.
Well, the display cases, that's kind of what made the social something, because all the pies are going to be displayed in there, and it's unfortunate if you have to get rid of them. But I can understand storing them in these, quite a feat.
Yeah. Mr. Craster, Blake, are you saying something?
Move to authorize.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I have some more questions.
We're saving money. We're saving...
Yeah, but are we going to destroy, take down the entire building?
Yeah.
I mean, are they going to put a new building there? We don't know what happens there. Because I mean, my big concern is, is if this might be, I mean, if this is kind of the way that they want to transition from Dunsmere to no longer be a stop on the train.
I think they're putting in a big platform here.
Yeah, but that was nice. My understanding is that they view this and another building as liabilities. Their trade limit, their liabilities, because it's falling in, and there are ways for the building, they're, you know, the city's leasing it.
I won't buy that building, because sometimes it's falling, it's falling. It's falling into issue itself.
To your point though, I had a quick question. Were you done? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Are these, is the renewal, the lease, are they year-long leases or month-to-month?
This is the first real estate license on this. I think they're permanent till long we keep paying, and so there's a... Great question.
I saw in there that it said that it's going to drop the cost down to the minimum, which is $3,000 per year. But there's a 3% increase every year, and then after three years, they have the right to redetermine the rates. That seems pretty standard, probably, for them.
Kind of the cost of the index.
I'm wondering though about the overall lease term. Is it, can they... Can they terminate the lease with 30 days' notice?
You know, this is a supplemental agreement. I would have to look at the full agreement.
I would love to know, you know, I've been fortunate enough to deal with UP on some other projects, and working with them has been very good, but I do know that they, when it comes to the real estate department, are, can be sticklers for certain things. And I do wonder if there's any way to get some assurances that that the depot building is not, you know, some assurances that we're going to be able to continue to lease that for some period of time and give us some security. We already know that there's another building that's on the chopping block.
Julie, can you pull the file?
What else could we lease from the museum?
The entire yard.
But the forks.
But the forks. Just the big forks, right?
We did some D and H classes in there, yes.
There's some parking.
Yeah, we leased, we leased that parking spots across from the brown trout, those diagonal spots. That's another like $3,000 a year lease. That's a minimum as well, so quite a few minimum leases around there. Minimum's better than five grand, but...
Right, but my question was what to release from UP at this point? Public works is...
Public works.
And the depot, we have to lease from it?
This is, that's what this is. It's the whole property. They wanted to demolish one of the buildings that's on that whole parcel.
I...
Is it all?
Why, I ever...
No, there's two buildings.
I stopped at the depot.
Look at the background, your back, it has pictures.
We're actually leasing the depot for Amtrak to come in there?
This is the depot.
Who pays the fee?
I'll go on the other side tomorrow.
So the city pays the lease for the depot and the museum?
So I guess my biggest question is, is the museum affected by this?
No, I don't see how that's the case. I mean, looking at the diagram, we have, the red areas on the diagram there are representing what will maintain, and the white areas, I understand it, that is right where the eight foot two, already two feet is, is the building that's being demolished, but the rest of it is maintained.
Can you come up and just confirm that, Blake? Just to confirm here on the... My understanding is, is that the museum is where the red are the leases. The red is where it's standing, the white, that's the way it's going, right?
Yes, I don't know if I'm the say all and all this thing, but my understanding, yeah, so the red, the red's not, if I read the key, the label. Red is, the red is the leased area. We have the access area, that parking lot, that's the blue. Then the building 6623 is just north of the red.
Right, that's the white structure you see.
The white flash structure, and that is the annexed building that we have currently been using the bottom level of to store a lot of things.
So to say that the museum is unaffected, it's not material, you're losing some storage, but you go over that, that's going to be it.
I'm not, yeah. My understanding, and I'm glad you're making this clear, is that, yes, the museum, that red part is still staying.
Because if we're losing the museum, I'm 100% against it.
Well, no, I wasn't, I would think that the museum was a...
I just, there's something about the red square over the museum, though.
Yeah.
Does UP make any financial contribution to the museum?
To the museum itself?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
Or to the historical society?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought we'd heard something about somebody coming in and putting a boardwalk.
So I've heard, I've heard Amtrak. Amtrak. I've heard Amtrak is in worse that. And I'm not totally entirely sure, but Amtrak might actually pay some for the building too.
Oh, right, because of, yeah, because of the...
I hear also, since that's one of the stocks. If we're not maintaining that, only at the cost of the street.
But the part of the historical society's mission was to upkeep these spaces so that Amtrak could continue there. So that is, it has been involved, it has been part of the Depot Society's mission to upkeep...
So that is, it has been involved, it has been part of the, um, the depot society's mission to upkeep the bathroom and the waiting area so that there is a stop.
And it looks very nice and clean.
Well, thank you very much.
It's fantastic.
Okay, so...
The mural is excellent.
Can we, uh, move on to a motion, is that possible?
We just want to make sure we're all clear.
I agree.
If the only thing, if we're talking about this, this white area that is going to be demolished, right?
Yes.
Alright, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a supplemental agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for lease audit number 230172.
Second?
Seconded.
Ms. Shanta, seconds, uh, I don't see any input, so it's just a regular vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll post. Anything before we adjourn, a motion carrying, yeah. Anything before we can close? I'd like to make sure to hold. Thank you all.